We have an appointment for nine, petition nine fifty-five. Is anybody here for nine fifty-five?
Jerry?
Yeah.
The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 4th, 2021, at seven forty-five in the great hall at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, on the application of Emile Bussier Jr. of True Storage for a special permit to construct a storage facility located at 314 Plymouth Street, Halifax. Said property is owned by R&amp;J LLC, as shown on assessors map sixty-three lot six and six A, book three eight oh one seven, page three forty-three. The applicant is seeking to obtain a special permit to construct a sixty-one thousand six hundred ninety square foot indoor climate-controlled storage building in the business zone according to the Halifax zoning bylaw, section one sixty-seven seven C, schedule of use regulations, table of use regulations, petition number nine fifty-five.
How long it? Anybody call you about nine fifty-five?
I need the planning board to deny the special permit. So.
Oh, they voted on it? They voted on it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So they voted against the nine?
Yeah.
So there's no need for...
Okay.
Wait, should we vote on it?
I don't think so.
We should, we just can't vote on it because...
Yeah, we should probably continue, right?
Because they didn't kind of see the nomination thing.
Do they have to withdraw? They have to withdraw, right?
They have to withdraw.
Yeah, it was something. They won't be able to build it with the planning boards, I believe.
They do gotta deny a letter from the planning board?
Yeah.
Oh, it's... Oh, it's in there. Oh, yeah.
At that point, it's got in the water, right?
Yeah. Why was the... Can I just ask? Maybe you'll know, maybe somebody else will know. Why was the planning board voting on this special permit?
Because it's four hundred fifteen thousand.
Okay. And so what were we voting on?
The use.
Fourteen thousand.
They needed a special permit for the use.
Um, well, I can summarize. So we have a decision letter from the planning board, signed by Gordon R. Andrews, the chairman, saying that on petition nine fifty-four, which is the same applicant, um, they voted, which is the sixty-one thousand nine hundred sixty square foot indoor storage building, they voted to deny the application since it doesn't fit into the established care of the neighborhood due to its large size and fifty-foot distance from the street. So it was denied four to zero to zero. And they have two years before they can reapply, so.
So the zoning board would have to do this?
Would have to.
Yeah, would have to vote on it. Right? Anybody in favor of nine fifty-five? Petition nine fifty-five?
Just for the sake of voting, I'll make a motion to accept petition number nine fifty-five as presented. Second.
What do we vote? What do you want to?
It's just to vote on it. We have to move it to vote on.
If you're accepting it, then you're accepting...
I'm not voting for it, I'm just moving the question.
Got you. All right. Jerry?
I agree.
No, yes.
We're passing locals?
I think we're voting on it, right?
Voting on it to deny?
Deny it.
Yes.
Okay.
No, I'm moving the question.
I have to refuse my question.
Oh, you should, you should do that. Oh, and then I have to... Oh, that's right. You have to go, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Why do you do that? I forgot. That's right. So since, all right, since I'm in active chair, I probably shouldn't make the motion. So we're gonna make the motion either to, we should just move the question and then vote in favor of the petition or not. Does that make sense? So I'll withdraw my motion. He's refused himself.
You're going to run a motion.
So now I'm in the acting chair. This is going really smoothly. So I'm looking for a motion on this question, on whether or not to approve it.
Because there's no... We would do this at the end of a discussion and all this.
Correct. Seeing as there's no, there's nobody in the audience to speak to this, and I don't think there's any more discussion from the board unless there is.
I thought they were coming back with a different plan.
I thought so too, and then I watched the, I don't know if I watched the one where they voted, but I watched the planning board, and I don't think they came to that either. So, and it looks like the planning board voted to decline, so.
Should we?
I mean, we can continue it, but I know that to approve, to approve the building permit, they're gonna need a special permit from us and from the planning board. And they won't be able to reapply for that special permit from right on time.
We're saved with the ballot.
So they won't be able to reapply for another special permit to the planning board for another two years since it got denied. We're discussing the climate-controlled storage facility.
Okay.
And planning board, it sounds like, denied it because we have a letter here from there. So thanks for coming up right on time, because we've got a little weird up here. The, and so we, I think, are...
So if the planning board denies it, can they not reapply for two years with the planning board?
Well, yeah, the planning board would have to allow them, it gets weird because it's going back to the, it'd be the same board that, under the general laws for the special permit, they'd have to go back to the planning board, and the planning board would have to, they'd have to go look at our bylaws, because I think ours may be more stringent than the state's. I believe the states say that, because usually a special permit would go to you all. So, but under the general laws, it, to go back within the two-year period, the planning board has to assent to that. I believe, but I have to go back and look at our bylaws, but I think it requires a unanimous rule rather than four out of five.
If we deny the special permit, it's two years, but what about the planning board?
No, a special permit is a special permit.
Yeah.
Or the site plan review.
Okay, especially, they're handling, it got weird because there were two special permits that were going on.
That's right, yeah.
One was for the fifteen thousand above square foot building, which isn't specific to a use, it's simply the size of the building. Those go to the planning board.
So that being denied, it's two years.
For them to go back to get a special permit for the fifteen thousand or greater, you all still need to make a decision on your special permit.
You do.
If you say no to that, then if, within the two years, they wanna try either, for example, go back to the planning board, the planning board has to assent to allow them to file within the two-year buffer. If they don't assent, then they have to wait two years. I believe that, again, I have to look at our zoning bylaws, I believe general laws say four out of five, our bylaws say five out of five. So they could certainly go and ask, can we reapply? And if the planning board says yes, at whatever level they have to, for your permit and their permit, they could start the process over again within the two years.
That would be the same if we voted no as well.
Correct.
Yeah.
And you do have to decide, you can't say, oh, the planning board said no, so ours is moot. No, you gotta make a decision.
We have a different question, yeah.
So we can either approve or reach out to them for them to withdraw.
We could continue, yeah. We could continue, or we could vote on it.
Another possibility, and it's up to the, obviously, the applicant, the applicant will always make a decision to withdraw without prejudice, which does means that buffer and everything else, they can reapply at any time in the future if they want to.
So we could do any, I mean, we could, we could vote today to have sent in a letter and give them a month to withdraw without prejudice, if you wanna do that. It's probably, yeah, it's probably fair.
As long as you're not meeting any deadlines in time?
Yeah, we just started it last month, so we've got plenty of time. So, all right, I'll take a motion to continue to the next meeting.
I'll make a motion for petition nine fifty-five to write the petitioner a letter, seeing if they want to withdraw their petition. Continue until the next meeting?
Yeah. So... Is there a second?
Second.
Tina?
I agree.
Bob?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes, so we'll continue to, what's, what's the date and time? When's our next meeting? December, summer, November? December thirteenth?
It sounds right, because it's the eighth, so it would be more or less six from April to thirteenth.
Yeah. Yeah, seven?
Mm-hmm.
Seven, must need it done. Okay. Come on back, we're done. You don't have to hide back there, it's all yours.
Thank you.
Seven fifteen.
Yeah, thirty-two minutes. Charlie was about an hour. Or we'll be, you wanna sit there for... Yeah. No, you're here, right?
I'm here upstairs until whenever.
Okay. It's up to you. We can chat with him now, or we can wait.
We can wait.
Okay.
We'll do this best. We wanna see you here, Bob.
Well, if you have another complaint, I'm going back downstairs.
Is that what we're doing?
Let's do it. Want to chat with him?
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Okay.
What do you got for questions?
So you're leaving?
Yes. I think my last day is November twentieth, I'll start work over in Spurquar on the twenty-second.
Oh, wow.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I think every town needs that at this point.
I think that's right.
And I will take, let it go. I'll take being lucky, yes, I mean, even if you're good, you can be lucky also.
I think that, yeah, there's something to be said for that.
Who is representing the zoning board from town, from the council?
Okay, so when the, so what happened, obviously, is that back when you were select and hired, or quoted Brooks and Durexus, particularly Paul Durexus's town council, then at subsequent meeting, I don't, it was either late this summer or early this fall, what they said was, all matters, all issues that would need counsel outside of the school, the school's its own thing, will go through Brooks and Durexus. So for instance, technically, Brooks and Durexus is working down our cable renewal contract with Constance. Bill August, which is one or two members of the fore of Epstein and August, that has been working on our cable stuff for decades now, is still the primary high tech, and is working through Brooks and Durexus. What the board said was that the outstanding issues that remain, that Amy Questle, who works for Open Page, or KP Law, technically now, would stay with her. So for instance, when you were still in the midst of dealing with Current Brothers, and you would have asked for legal opinions from Amy about that, she gave those to you, and then now you made a decision to let's close. Anything subsequent now for Current Brothers, whether it's their appeal, a weird decision, or any other matters to deal with Current Brothers, is being handled through Brooks and Durexus. They have a whole team of lawyers, depends on what type of question comes up, and procedural things tend to be with Naomi Colomato. Land issues are being dealt with a mix of a couple people, period, so, and also retract some depending on what it is. So Naomi, for instance, is handling the actual litigation with Current Brothers, whereas if there's a technical question, it might be one of the other two attorneys that would be dealing with that on other issues. Amy Questle is working right now, still, as a talent attorney, in the second series of zoning appeals that were filed by Gordon Andrews, obviously, more than a year ago now. Those are sitting with land court, she's our lead representative in those, she keeps Brooks and Durexus informed about what's going on, but we're not acting an act of defense on that in the sense that the matter really is between Mr. Andrews and other party trusts, man's estates, very much filing motions and briefs and everything in court. And, you know, if Amy feels that the town needs to know something about what's going on, she'll inform the town through the board selection. I hope that the board will tell you all that at this point, when all this is on the record, in the sense of if you went to the court's website, all these, you know, who filed a motion when is all right there, individual papers may not be there, but what's happened. So all this is not something I have to go in the executive session to talk about, because it's all right in plain view of the public as a matter of whose sake. So all that's happening, I would expect at some point, there'll be a conference with the judge, the judge will ask sides questions based on whatever briefs that were filed, and at some point, maybe the court will make, the judge will make a decision on the case, and we'll see what happens after that. But if Amy needs anything from you all, or needs anything from the town, you know, she's perfectly capable of answering those questions. She's also handling a zoning enforcement case for the town, that's the Marble case, where our building inspector had filed against the Marbles for illegally using various buildings on their property. So she's handling that until that's done. Once, yeah, I don't know what's going, if for some reason the section Andrews case is also goes up to the appeals court, that's where the first case is, and the court has basically said to everybody, we're gonna wait until the land court makes a decision about the second series of cases that was dangerous and filed. If that goes up, they're not quite sure whether Amy will file that or not, that would be up to the board selection to make that decision. We do, one of the, Naomi Colomato is working, you know, not working because there's nothing to do but wait for the appeals court case, where they said, we're waiting for the land court to make a decision. So she just basically said, once a while, she'll send a note, Charlie, the appeals court, continue the case for another three months, we're all waiting for the land court. But once those things are resolved, everything will work through Brooks and Durexus. So if you need legal assistance in terms of interpretation of the general laws, interpretation of the town's bylaws, et cetera, writing, decision letters, everything else, that's gonna all go through Brooks and Durexus.
Okay. Thanks. Any other question?
Well, I have a question, but it's later on in the, right, in the discussions. So I have a...
For Charlie?
Yeah, for Charlie.
You wanna do it now?
Well, can we do it out of order?
I think that's what he's here for, yeah.
Okay, so on the matter of the two Plymouth Street addresses, when there might be zoning violations, the zoning enforcement officer was no response.
Okay.
Now, he's new, maybe he needs more time, blah, blah, blah.
He's here.
Oh, he's here? Who is it? Oh, okay. Oh, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, I wanna know what our options are.
Well, I think the first thing is, since he's here, you've worked with, see what, where things stand, and whether you can work in some way to resolve this.
Sure.
I don't mean one way or the other, but in the sense of move this forward, so that you get to a point where you, you know, you reach a point and say, okay, thank you very much, and you do something else, or thank you very much, or all happy, or whatever the situation is.
Yeah, I probably wouldn't have asked the question if, you know, I never met...
I mean, under, again, back to zoning bylaw, it's gonna be a little weird, if for some reason you've asked an essence for a determination, or you feel this violation of the court on any property, it's matter of the deceased or any other, and you disagreed with the building inspector as a zoning enforcement officer, I think you probably, like, this is where it gets here, I think you do wanna talk to Brooks and Durexus before you would do anything else. Because normally, if there was somebody else who felt there was a violation of the property, and went to the zoning enforcement officer, and they disagreed with the zoning enforcement officer's decision, that person could appeal that decision to the zoning board of appeals. Well, I don't know how it works where the zoning board of appeals is the actual individual or individuals who have filed a complaint, or filed about it.
A request.
Disagreed with the zoning enforcement, can they hear their own appeal at the ZBA, or does it immediately, or if you want to force it, does it immediately then go to, do you bring that to land court? But that gets complicated, because we're in an essence, have one public body suing another, having suit as in, you want money, dare we?
No, no, it's a question.
And as we talked about before, and other, for other situations, the board selection holds the purse strings on the town's law, but it hasn't should, because somebody at some point is gonna make a decision about whether we're gonna pursue someone or not. In that case, you'd have, if you wanted to file suit, went through the land court, appealing the ZBA's decision, you'd have to get money to do so, and you'd have to talk to the board selection about that. If they didn't want to give you money to do that, I think you need an answer also as what are the ZBA's options? If for some reason the town, the board selection refuses to grant money, can you, as a part of the town, but not the town itself, file an appeal at the land court or not? But I'm not gonna give you answers to that, that's something that Brooks and Durexus would.
Okay, and then, besides any of that, I just wanna say, you know, I've watched it for a lot of years, many years, and this town doesn't know what they're losing. All right? It was a privilege to work with you, to work against you, whatever it may be, and we were very lucky to have you, and with all the bad stuff going on in town and all the good people we lost, I tell you, this one is bad. You've been outstanding, and I just, for one, just really, really appreciate everything you've done for the town. I wish everybody knew what I knew, and how hard you've worked, and how hard you tried.
I appreciate that a great deal. It's been wonderful working here for almost twenty-six years, and the main reason it's been so enjoyable are the people I've worked with, whether it's your committee, or other town officials, or boards committees, but also all the residents who don't serve on boards and committees, that they make what's Halifax, Halifax. I mean, you take about, think about the Hops playground is the best example I can think of. That was not a town board committee, that was a group of residents who were interested in making Halifax a better place, and they spent years of their lives, they raised new money that we've ever seen anybody ever raise, and they made that a reality. And that's the sort of spirit that I love seeing here, I love working with everybody to make it happen. Everything at some point comes to an end, whether it's the end we wanted or not, but I am glad I spent the time I did here.
I am, and I know everybody wishes you nothing but the best along the way.
I'd say the same thing. I think you've been, you know, you've been very professional, very, even with this board as delicate as it can be, you've been very upfront with us when we're doing something, when we're wading into difficult territory, and hopefully we can find somebody to fill your shoes that is equally as, you know, thoughtful and professional. So thank you for all you've done.
You're welcome.
You've always been accessible to everyone.
Mm-hmm.
That's the, I think that's the key thing that a lot of people miss.
Julie may feel different. Show creepy body that helps.
There you go.
You're doing a nice one.
Thanks, I think we're good, right?
I appreciate it, yeah, you know, I'm here for a couple more weeks, if something comes up in the meantime, please try to help me.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck. Let me move on to...
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen, petition nine fifty-seven.
The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on November eighth, 2021, at seven fifteen in the great hall of Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, on the application by T-Mobile Northeast to modify an existing special permit to upgrade the existing wireless facility located at 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, map seventy-two lot fifteen, title reference book one six one four, page two forty-four. The applicant is seeking a modification to their existing special permit to remove six antennas and replace with nine antennas, remove nine radio units and replace with six radio units, remove six hybrid cables and replace with three cables, cabling and replace equipment to existing lease area and upgrade equipment onsite in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax, section one sixty-seven four G, section four D, and any other relief the board deems necessary. Map seventy-two lot fifteen is within Wireless Communication Services, District A, chapter one sixty-seven four G, petition is number nine fifty-seven.
Anybody here for, come on up? Can you state your name and...
Good evening, my name is Tim Green, here on behalf of T-Mobile Northeast, who has an existing facility right there, on the water tank, it's been there for close to twenty years, started to sprint, sprint and T-Mobile merged, now T-Mobile's, they're looking to upgrade the site. There have been a number of different iterations of antennas up there, and currently there are six, gonna move it to nine, remove some of the other remote radio units, upgrade the other equipment onsite, and the existing mounts are there, we already have approval from the water department to do this, and looking to, per the terms of the bylaw, we have to modify the special permit whenever any changes are made to the site.
How long is it gonna take for you guys to do the modification?
Probably two, three weeks, but not continuous.
No major changes, just changing the antennas?
Correct, but we need to get up there, you're gonna need a man lift, you know, coordinate with the water department, things of that nature. But it's not, it's not terribly complicated, particularly that water tank, because we're on an existing rail, so there's no welding or anything like that.
All equipment that is not gonna be necessary in the future is gonna be removed?
Correct. It's almost a, it's really almost a complete tear down and replacement. Pretty much all the equipment that's there is going, and there's brand-new equipment that will replace it.
I'm just looking at the bylaws. The height isn't changing?
No.
Okay.
Same. Same location too, the antenna mounts are already there.
It's going from six to nine?
Six to nine, yes.
And the facility, the structure itself is the same, you mentioned, right?
Correct.
So make sure we're covering everything.
I'll make a motion to approve petition number nine fifty-seven as stated.
Any second?
Is anybody here to speak to it?
Anybody in the audience wants to speak to this? You second?
I second, yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And me, yes, if half is half is zero.
All set.
Good luck.
Thank you.
See, that's like the old days, right? Nobody's upset, oh, wow.
Quiet.
We got petition nine fifty-eight.
Right on time. God, it's amazing.
What are you doing, too?
Nine fifty-eight, right? The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, November eighth, 2021, at seven thirty in the great hall at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, on the application by Kurt Marble for a special permit and variance to construct an addition and attached garage located at two seventy-five Wood Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Kurt Marble, as shown on assessors map one eighteen lot four A, title reference book four six two five six, page sixty-five. The applicant is seeking to, the applicant is seeking to construct an addition and attached garage, which would be in violation of the town of Halifax zoning bylaws, section one sixty-seven eleven, table of dimensional and density regulations requiring a variance of the front setback from fifty feet to thirty-eight point seven feet. The project would also be in violation of section one sixty-seven twelve F four, as a proposed garage is in excess of eight hundred and eighty-four square feet and will require a special permit. The area is zoned residential and is petition number nine fifty-eight.
Hello there, everyone.
How you doing?
Good.
What are you looking to do?
Hopefully build me a bigger house. Yeah.
You got the fancy one.
You got the fancy ones.
Christmas already?
Yeah, right.
Is this Grant's whole house?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
You want to tell us what you want to do?
Uh, yes, so, um, so what I want to do is that I want to, um, add like a twenty-two by thirty, uh, addition for a new kitchen and, um, stairway to go upstairs, and then the garage is going to be just a little bit bigger than you guys, uh, asked for. It's going to be like, I think the number was like thirty by thirty-four, and, um, I kind of needed that big for the, uh, master bedroom upstairs where it figures in for the bathroom and everything else. And there's also going to be a pantry, uh, floated into the garage from the kitchen, so I lose a little bit there. And, um, yeah, I'm just really hoping to get like a little bit bigger than what I have now, because I just, there's like no dormer in the back, you don't really have enough room to like stand up upstairs and the layout of the whole house is built in like nineteen thirty-three, so I'm kind, kind of just trying to upgrade it. The septic was redone, uh, house five years ago, and it was figured for a four bedroom, and I'd like to get it for the four bedroom now. So. I hope you guys like it.
So the difference between the two, at least from my perspective, the difference between the two requests, the two things?
Yeah.
Um, to, for the, for the special permit for the garage?
Yes.
Um, that's just a special permit that we can issue based on the, the, the use of the block and the
Yes.
The reasonableness in the neighborhood and all that type of stuff. So that's, that's an easier climb. Um, the, the variance is really restricted, so the, to grant, for us to grant a variance, we have to find a hardship that is not self-created. So we have to find either a topography of the land or some other hardship.
Because I'm too close to the street, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the house, so the house is built in nineteen thirty-three, like I said, and like back then, obviously they made it too close, but I've already tried to, to build the house around that and like I only get like a, like a little, like, like I'll, I'll lose like twenty feet, so the addition itself will only be like maybe twenty by however the long, almost look like a, a long pick roll, you know what I mean? So it kind of just defeat the purpose of making a, a, a beautiful house, you know what I mean, so.
And, and...
Yeah.
We, we see this a lot, like, uh, everything you're saying is totally reasonable. I, unless I'm wrong, I think we were just talking about, I think the only issue you have is four inches, which is, which is ridiculous. Um, am I wrong?
No, you know, yeah.
So, yeah, so, because the, the street is angled, the way the house is angled to the street.
Yeah.
So the existing, am I wrong with this? The existing house is thirty-nine point one
Yeah.
Feet from the rope, right?
Yeah.
The, the edge of the garage, which is now where they measure from, is, is thirty-eight point seven, so it's point four
Long.
Of a foot closer to the street.
Yeah.
So to grant the variance for the four inches, we would have to find that you, there's no, nothing else you could do but build that four inches. So that, I guess the, if you moved the garage back four inches,
Four inches, yeah.
You wouldn't even need that variance.
I, oh.
Really?
Yes.
Four inches? Four inches. That's, so that's honestly, and this is like, so that's, that's why I'm bringing it up, because I want you to build the most beautiful house in town. I'm not, I don't want to be that guy.
I don't want to.
And I think that's probably all of us, but I, but like looking at this, we're just like, oh.
I thought, I thought that it was fifty feet that I had to be...
So it is fifty feet, you are, you are, you are non-conforming.
They're non-conforming.
So you're increasing the non-conformity by...
By four inches?
Yeah.
Because of the curve of the road, remember?
Yeah.
Taking too much of a route.
Yeah, so like honestly, if it scoots, if it scoots back, you're okay.
Okay.
The only thing you would need is the special permit for the garage, which the garage is...
Yeah, I was going to say that, that four inches was figured into a, um, the horseshoe-shaped driveway, does that matter, no?
No, it's from the, it's from the, I know, I know. It's from the edge of the garage. It's, it's just the way the road and the, the building is angled, that's, am I wrong about any of this? You might know.
No.
Yeah.
All right, so...
So you have to do, if you want to do, redo the plans?
Yeah, I bothered him a lot. Like, it was his first day, I was at the... Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But, um, so when I go to re-figure the plans, I just tell him to scoot it back all the foot, you know?
If, if, if the edge of the, see, I don't know if you can see it up here.
So, yeah, no, I'll probably just end up lining the front of the garage up with like the staircase that's already there for the, um, the, see how it like jogs?
So like this is, the edge of the house up here is what, what they're measuring it from?
Yeah.
So even if you, if you just scooted this back, so it's thirty-nine point one off on the plans
Okay.
When they build it?
All right.
You, you won't need the variance and you'll be fine, and all you'll need is a special permit for the garage.
For the garage?
We can talk about that.
All right, so I'll work on that then?
Yeah.
And I'll be fine.
And then, well, no, you'll still have to come back.
You have to come back in front of us.
For the garage, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
You need the whole, you know, that's the plan that shows that
That is...
You don't need a variance.
Okay, all right, so I got to move it four inches now, I'll, I'll move it.
And, and then we'll come back and we'll talk about the garage, I mean, yeah.
Other than that, you guys see that everything looks, checks out okay, right? At all, stand by, webbing engineering, so.
Oh, yeah.
It should be good.
I don't think anyone else has any, I was just pointing that stuff out.
All right.
You want to speak for everybody?
All right, wow.
I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, so we're good then?
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
If anybody else has any questions.
Anybody have a question?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah?
Petition number nine fifty-eight, continue with your, uh,
Next to you.
December thirteenth.
December fifteenth, December sixth, is that right?
Six.
Thirteenth, what is it? What is it?
Sorry.
Thirteenth, no, thirteen. Second.
No. Kevin?
Um, yes.
Yes.
Mark's help, yes. All right, we'll see you next.
See you next month, guys.
Have a good time.
What's happening? I was having a conversation with him.
And they could literally take this whole thing and draw it back like a foot Yeah. And you don't mind.
Yep.
And it's, right?
Well, yeah.
I looked at it, it's like, oh, these poor people.
Four inches.
No, I think it's point four, too, I don't even know what that is in inches or whatever. Is it five?
Discussion for the... We're here to discuss Chris Winowitz, want to come on up?
I think the Board of Health and... Did you go in with the Board of, with the Board of Health?
Yeah, I was in there.
What, what did you find out?
Uh, Mr. Valerie, the health agent did a very extensive investigation finding the sound desigils pretty much all over the neighborhood, uh, during on hours and off hours, during running the ton grinder and non-running ton grinder. Uh, I included a copy of his report with my letter, uh, basically, uh, the decimal levels that are emitted from that ton grinder are within DDP's, uh, standard.
So the Board of Health is...
Yeah, for, it is not considered a sound nuisance. The Board of Health voted three and O to, to approve Mr. Valerie's, uh, report.
Anybody have any questions?
No, I read the report.
Yeah, we have.
Seemed very detailed.
He's got probably over forty-five, fifty hours of that for...
Can I?
Forty-five or fifty.
Wow.
Yeah, we, uh, Mr. Uh, was it a clad, clad tree? That's...
I don't know, what's the question?
The clad tree service?
Yes.
Uh, he's, as long as he starts it up at like seven o'clock in the morning and not on Sundays or, or do we, we can't put any restrictions on them, is only that?
Actually, uh, he hasn't been running the machine that often. We haven't been running the machine for two reasons. One, so we can take samples, and the other reason is the fire chief wants the debris pile that he's got there, he hasn't been running the machine cleaned up.
So right now the machine's off?
Basically, I think I've seen it run one day since then, since we did our sampling, but he is, uh, ordered by the fire chief to get that pile, uh, cleaned up and have me actual position.
Actually, I've got many issues with this report. There's all inconsistencies. I talked to the manufacturer of the sound meter, I talked to the same person, uh, Jen Carter, DEP in Lakeville. Uh, there's multiple things that weren't done correctly. Uh, she even states, there's a copy of her email here, the policy of ten decibels is a policy and is actually not part of their regulations, and it wouldn't stand up in court. She goes on to explain, and I talked to her in depth about this, that there's many other things to consider. Uh, we talked about A-weighted, the only thing that was done in the study was A-weighted sound meetings, sound ratings, C-weighted wasn't done for low frequencies. I even described how the problem was low frequencies, which is like a bass, it can travel right through the walls, you hear like in your ears. You, I talked to the, the meter company in Hampshire that made it, they said the C-weighted should have been also done, which also could be a couple of decimals difference. Uh, I was at about eight, eight decibels at my yard, and this was only one twenty-minute reading they did of this whole report. That was another issue the DEP had. She actually told me she was kind of surprised that in that quickly they made a determination without like multiple days, because the sound intensity of the machine can go up and down. Um, there's also a correction value that when you measure between the ambient background, that, uh, once less than ten decibels, you have to add like a, anywhere from three to one decibels. That wasn't done, that would have put, almost put me up like the ten decibels. Um, I even have the directions when I talked to the maker of the thing, the sound meter. Here's Bob with the sound meter in the back of his truck directly against him, that he cannot do that at all, gives false readings.
Now, what is the distance between...
Uh, the wind, actually part of their report here, they only have ambient, the windy day, she said they should have never even done this at the DEP. She actually cut me off when I said they were out there doing readings when we had twenty to twenty-five steady wind with gust of thirty-three five. Before I could even finish, she said absolutely, she was astonished that we even doing readings on a windy that day to even clean, include them in the report here. I've had letters, this is going on for like...
So what you're trying to sell us is their, uh, their report is false.
Yeah.
And they spent fifty hours on that, on the report?
On one twenty-minute reading in my backyard. First they told me they weren't even going to do readings in my backyard.
I was in his backyard with Mr. Valerie to take the readings.
After I made a big argument at a board health meeting. They said they were going to do it down the street, even the DEP and the maker of the meter were like, when, when you make a complaint, you got to do it in the backyard.
In your backyard?
Yeah. There's also part of their policy too, that once complaint's made, one of the meter ratings has to be done in the complaint's backyard and any neighboring residential or businesses that house, uh, sets of receptors, like workers and stuff. So he did it in the cul-de-sac, the business is around there, it's almost twenty-five decibels higher than the background. I brought up all these issues and they just want to ignore it. I basically got told the board has no, no knowledge of all this stuff and we're small town Halifax, we'll just stick with the ten decibels and it's not a nuisance.
Any questions from members of the board?
I also, from the beginning of this, everything kept changing. This has been going for a year. When I first went to my father Valerie, he came out, heard that, he was like, oh yeah, you got an issue like that. I've got a letter from the Board of Health from months ago that they'll go work with all the boards to try to work, work this through, that never happened. And everything just kept changing, everything I was told never happened.
Well, something happened that we, we got a reading, you know, from the...
He also agreed, he convinced me that they go ahead and run the machines for almost four days straight. That's never happened. I've asked them about determination on the zoning, I've never heard anything on that, that one to kind of get ignored. Then I got forwarded to you guys, that's why I came to last meeting. It's almost like this just wants to be buried.
Nobody's trying to bury anything, believe me.
No.
No.
Well, I have to agree with you when I read that report, you are right, decibels do add up, not directly. If you had ten and there was another five...
It's not linear.
It's not linear, and, and another five, there's a formula I used to know, but...
Basically, every three decibels will go up with a sound double, so from like ten to thirteen...
No, 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 what I'm saying is if you don't add the ambient, then you should, because it's not just the reading, it's both, and you're right about that. But it's not, you know, it's not ten plus five, it's ten plus a formula to add like a one point two or something.
Now, so I talked to the DEP, that's why the ten decibel, she, they admitted, even Bob said it's in Board Health, it would never scan the board.
Right.
That, it's a policy in there, but you can't go by it.
But what you were saying, I know for a fact is correct. You know, as far, I don't know about the court thing, but how it does add up, the decibels add up.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's true.
So like ten decibels, I mean, if it went from twenty to thirty, that's not a big difference, but we're going up to like sixty to seventy, so every three decibels it's doubling, that, that's a huge difference, they even go up eight decibels in the backyard, higher than any of the other ambient background, from industrial bike and... Bob also attached in this report too, from the World Health Organization. For high density residential, low density, the threshold should only be fifty-five to fifty, commercial should almost be sixty, industrial sixty-five. So even in my backyard, I'm way over industrial noise.
And what was that from?
In his report, s- some of the back pages.
I missed that.
And that's when I talked to the DEP, she, that's, you know, she's like the ten decibel that can't stand, there's many factors you're going to consider if it's a nuisance. But they didn't, they didn't want to listen to any of that and just threw it all out, said we have no experience in this stuff. They didn't do a C-weighted. The other thing, there's many studies and low frequency causes health effects, the way it affects the body, the noise continuously all day. Uh, and the studies show that...
He's not, he's not running that machine twenty-four seven?
Yeah, but I've been told he's, at some point he is, like he was before.
I don't think he ran it twenty-four seven.
No, not twenty-four seven.
What's that?
Not twenty-four seven, but running it all day, like eight hours.
What is the distance between your house and, and the...
Uh, I don't have that one.
Well, you take a straight line.
Over two thousand feet.
Two thousand feet? And what is the closest house to you?
Uh, oh, hundred feet, hundred fifty.
And they're not complaining?
Uh, they didn't want to really get involved.
So, I mean, from, from our perspective, from my, my, from my perspective, I guess, is, um, so this isn't a question of land use necessarily at this point, it's not a question of...
Well, that was my other thing, well, the zoning.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm getting at. So, so this isn't really a question of approving a special permit or, um, you know, approving a variance or something to that effect. This, where this is coming in, um, the only, the only jurisdiction I think that, that would fall under zoning is a, is a zoning violation, which is arguably comes from the building inspector, the zoning enforcement agent.
Which I had asked for.
Yeah, um, and we requested him to go out and, and look, and he did. Um, the, um, like it definitely sounds like there's something driving you crazy or you wouldn't come to all these meetings, right? Like I watched the Board of Health meeting, I watched that interaction, that was, um, that, and I kind of heard all their perspective on that stuff. I think the... Yep. Um, and we requested him to go out and, and look, and he did. Um, the, um, like it definitely sounds like there's something driving you crazy or you wouldn't come to all these meetings, right? Like I watched the board of health meeting. I watched that interaction. That was, um, that, and I kind of heard all their perspective on that stuff. I think the, so I just looked at the, the definition of, of light industrial use, which I probably didn't look at ever, and then we've looked at it fifty times in the last, uh, six months. Um, is, you know, the, it, the, the noise pieces in there about light industrial use and, and that it cannot create a nuisance from noise, um, that is noxious or, or creates toxic waste by, byproducts or something like that. So the issue at this point is it, it, they're not requesting a permit. Uh, we're not approving a, a situation. I think the only role that we would have is to determine a zoning violation. And so to, to that point for me, like at this point, the only, like we have your testimony. We have, we have your experience, which sounds like it's terrible. Um, but we also have like this big report with a bunch of, of an actual sound. So if there was, I, I don't know, like if we had more information, if we had, it, like if we knew exactly when this stuff was happening. I know like, like we talked, I think last time, you had come up and it, it's, it was infrequent that it happens.
But it would get used a lot in the winter months, fall and early spring?
Yeah, that's what you mentioned. So, I mean-
If the fire chief even told me that, I mean, his, his picture on it was at some point he's gonna stop using it all the time again. But he's had a lot of violations. He's been shut down, problems with the fire. The big place when the place burned.
And you mentioned, you mentioned something in your letter about something with the, the fire chief as well. I mean, I guess from, from my perspective on this, to be very honest is, like if this was all the information we had, it, it seems to me like something's happening out there that's driving you crazy. And I want to help you. But I don't know if, like I, I don't know if there's, and, and you make probably solid arguments way beyond my expertise on the, the sound stuff, which you spent, like it sounds like you spent a lot of time looking into. Uh, but if there was an alternate sound study that showed that there was a problem, uh, where there is additional evidence that shows that there was a problem, that, that was, you know, contrary to the report, the, the health agent made, I think that would be the, the, that would make, put me in a position where I think we could act on that. Cause I, I don't know, like I'm not entirely sure of our jurisdiction in all this. I think the zoning enforcement agent can issue, um, a fine if someone is violating zoning. Uh, but I also don't know if, if we're in a position to, to issue that fine either. Um, and I don't, and I, and if he was applying to put that tub grinder out there to, to have industrial use, which I think he's able to, it's an industrial zone. Um, it's, it's a, for us, it's a weird-
Yeah, cause my thing too is one twenty-minute thing and it was quiet. I took over, uh, almost two hundred pitches in my backyard of what they were dumping into it. Every front, and they weren't putting the same big stuff in it. When they did this measure, this one-day measurement. So my other issue is when he starts using this all again, all the time, I mean-
You even stated that four days for everyone gave up. Well, I just, I don't want it to turn out what happened at the board of health because that was-
But might using it for a week, every day to even satisfy the fire. And that's what I'm wondering too. The fire department just gave him orders to clean it up. And that's just being dragged yard. Like he just, the zoning enforcement said he hasn't been grinding. I mean, where's all that zoning going? All the issues there and...
Well, that's, I don't know that zoning stuff. I think that might be fired.
I don't think he has any zoning issues. Uh, does he have any, uh, zoning violations on the property?
When I did it, sorry, the fire chief and Mr. Dowd, he knows only my issue.
The only thing he's doing is, is grinding the, uh-
I was originally told there were zoning violations because none of this was approved for that on there on the site plan.
Well, he's, he's got a, I think he's got a permit to put a building up there.
He doesn't have one. He has a foundation, only for him at this point.
But not all the other structures and the bins and the equipment?
The equipment is there. That's his, that's his livelihood, him. And he's got trucks there. He's got this, he got a couple of trailers that he stores stuff in.
Yeah, but I've, I've been to other meetings where new use like this, a whole grinding operation, and he's putting all new structures there for storage that were never approved on any site plan or even mentioned?
But did, did you see when you were out there, any accessory structures that were against zoning?
He's got, uh, he's got storage blocks, concrete storage blocks. He's building a, a bin area to maintain the wood chips so they don't fall over and go toward the log lines of, uh, the fire chief to maintain access around that vibe. And that was shown as a storage area on a site plan.
Hey, the approved site plan never showed any of that. This is what was given to the fire department. All this new use, all in here, was never shown in any of the older approved planning board site plans.
And, and again, I think that a, a change in the approval from the planning board wouldn't come to us. It would, if there was a change in that, the site plan from the planning board, I think-
Well, wouldn't that be a violation and have to go back and be looked at?
It would, if that's what he deemed, yeah, it would go-
Plus, it's all in residential area. Residential.
Well, the stor- I mean, the storage, the, I mean-
You can store, you can store stuff in the residential area?
Yeah.
But he's doing a commercial operation all though.
But you can, you can put a, you can put a trailer in your yard and store stuff in it.
But he's not just storing. I mean, he's actually doing an operation with the grinder and-
The grinder is not in a residential area. It's in an industrial-
Nope, it's in residential. It's clearly-
It's by the, it's by the swamp, ain't it?
Yeah.
That's not residential, I mean-
It's zoned residential, actually. If you look on the zoning maps, and it's outlined here on this, from bracket engineering. We've got residential and commercial. So the grinder and all the operations and- And I've looked on the town website too, and it reflects the same thing.
Who'd you get this?
From the fire chief.
Did you pull this up to the zoning enforcement officer?
No, I've recently sawed that.
I have this from the town.
Yeah, I was thinking about pulling that up and it, like it doesn't, it's not gonna show like on that specific lot. That's the tough part. I was thinking the same thing.
I think the same thing back here.
Yeah.
I think I went into the plan maps and found that plan map of that area.
Yeah, if you go to the G I S, I think you can pull up each individual up. I mean, the, I, I guess, I'm not saying there isn't a problem out there that's, that's worth a three hundred dollar a day zoning violation, I guess. I'm, I'm saying is, I guess from, from what we have currently, and I'm only speaking for myself, but from, from what we currently have, I don't think if we issued a three hundred dollar a day zoning violation, and I don't even know if we have the jurisdiction to do that. Um, but I don't even know based on what the, the board of health and the health inspector and the, the zoning enforcement officer all saw. I don't think that would stand up if somebody appealed that. Uh, so I guess the, if we had more evidence to go on, um, like an alternate sound study or-
I was just curious, cause I requested it and kind of got, did, told, we weren't gonna do that. But you also requested the zone. So there's no zoning violations there, even though this stuff-
Well, well, we requested on, a couple of different things, like we normally do is to, to, for the zoning enforcement officer when we hear something for him to just go check it out.
He went out there and got a report with the, with the fire chief and the board of health and his, you know, his knowledge there, being there.
The fire chief said he basically had no interest in any of this other stuff. All he cares about is N F P A. When he gave me that.
Mm-hmm.
He said there could, he, he even gave me a letter with that saying that, uh, I guess what I call it, site plan for his N F P A, uh, might not satisfy any other board as like, as like a site plan. There might still be issues on that. All he was looking at is that satisfied the fire production plan.
Yeah.
The fire chief said that he stamped that plan for a no-armed. He said, "That plan is for his fire plan only. It should not be used or interpreted as an approval for any other board."
But his letter said there could also still be issues. Like I, I pointed out, talked to fire chief that they're showing all the uses there that I, and he's like, "Yeah, that could be an issue, but that'd be-"
Yeah, and I, and I think from my perspective, they're absolutely, I'm not telling you there isn't. Like I, I, I'm not, like, when, when residents come in here and they're this concerned about it, like I think you probably have stuff to do on a Monday night that's not coming here and talking to us. So I guarantee there's something going on that you're not happy about. What, I guess from my perspective, and I don't know if anybody else feels the same way, but like, for me to feel comfortable taking any sort of action, even if we had the jurisdiction to do it, I'm not sure if we do. Um, like it, for, for me to say, and people appeal stuff all the time to land use and courts and all sorts of stuff. We write up our decision and I have a sound study from the, the health agent. I have the zoning enforcement officer saying there was no zoning enforcement violations. And, and, and the al- and the alternate argument is concern resident. Like I don't know if we have enough to make that case today.
What about reviewing the site plan?
That, that doesn't, I mean, the site plan goes under the planning board.
But, but even reviewing that site-
He, he looked at it and said there's no issues. So if I appeal that, doesn't it go to you to relook it, to do something with the site plan or?
But, and even in the site plan, so we can look at the site plan and see what he's doing on that, that we don't have any decision or evidence. And, and I, I don't even know, I don't know what his decision would be if you presented photos or, or evidence that there was stuff going on in the residential zone that shouldn't be in the residential zone. But like, I don't think anybody has that evidence today either. We have your testimony to that fact. People come in here and say all sorts of stuff.
But I guess I'm just getting at is that I've seen other meetings, other properties, if there's any new use from what was originally, then it has to go back and relooked at.
Mm-hmm. But he has the right to operate what he's doing there right now.
But it was never approved.
Oh, and I'll be very honest, this year, we've had people come and sit in that seat and tell us that, that they have been brought up here because their use was not fitting to what their special permit was. And they have told us that they have followed the, the zoning. We had no evidence of the contrary. And so we continued to allow them to, to have that use.
If, if I got-
We have to just go on-
The approved site plan that doesn't show that?
But we have a site plan that, that you gave us and showed us today that has a section of it in the residential zone. That's all we have. We don't have, I don't have any other description of events that's going on out there that will be worth a, a zoning violation.
But this is what they approved, nothing.
We need to get that verified.
Not gonna be used on that property.
And, and he can, but he can use his property that he owns out there. He just can't use it for the use that's outside of that zone.
So that's the question. We have to get that answered.
Correct. Well, I think we've got an answer from the zoning enforcement agent at this point, based on the evidence we have, which is none. But if there is more evidence, I think that would be different, right?
Yeah. Do, do we know for certain that the grinder, it's a grinder? Uh, is it on residential land?
I, I don't have any knowledge of it.
So that's something, could we find, could we find that out?
Yeah, I will look into it. Of course, I've heard it tonight.
Right.
And, and I hate saying this to you because I know it's driving your life crazy, but I, but-
I understand that tonight industrial lockdown, there's, uh, induc- light industrial zone. I don't know why there's a residential zone going through there, which is right next to a power.
Yeah, they're at the end, right? Is that why? They're out the net.
Because, because it is.
They're right in the middle.
On the side, oh, okay.
You got the recycling center?
Yeah.
Another storage lot where they just store trucks and then down. So they're like in the middle.
And between them is Newcom tree. He stores his stuff in there.
Just trucks. He just-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. He stores his trucks in there.
Yeah.
But he has a place in Bridgewater. He's Bridgewater.
Yeah, when he's, I spoke to him on the phone when I originally got lied to, that no one owns that machine down there. It, they told me, yeah, cause Clint's told me for over a week that they don't own that machine and no employees work there. And it's someone else next door. Until I had to go down there and take pictures of it. Uh, they said they had the same machine somewhere else and they had issues too. And they, they had to bring it somewhere away on the middle of Bridgewater, Rainham Sandpit. He actually said he wasn't surprised that someone was supposed to start complaining about it.
I think, I think what stands with us is if it is residential, then it's a violation of use. And then we have some jurisdiction over it. So I think that's the first question we have to have answered. Other than that, I really don't know.
Maybe we ask the building inspector.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I agree with you. Like I, 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 my concern at this point is, this is a fair amount of evidence that, that they're not seeing what you're seeing. I think that's probably the way to say it correctly. Is, is the, the, the study that he did with the sound and the zoning inspection that the zoning enforcement officer did has, clearly hasn't seen the, the effects that you have experienced. And so-
It was one day, one day with the sound meter.
Right. And, and to be honest, if there were a hundred residents in here and a sound study that showed otherwise, and six videos of that grinder going all winter long, that would be a pretty strong argument for us to go after a zoning enforcement violation. But today we have a sound study from the town's board of health agent.
But also has a lot of issues.
Right, but also no other sound study that says there is a violation. Right? So may, that might be, you might be a hundred percent right, but there is no alternate. So maybe the D E P, whoever that was, the D E P can come out and do that. So she thinks it's so wrong. Maybe she can come out and review that or write a letter explaining all that stuff. Like I, I just think the, even if the evidence is incorrect, the evidence is pretty heavy on one side. And we, and I don't know, and tell me if I'm wrong. I'm, I'm doing-
No, you're doing right.
I just, I just, I, I feel like we're not in a great position to, and I, and I'm open to talk about this every meeting if, if there's new evidence that comes up. Um, cause I don't, I, I feel for you because like clearly you're upset, you know?
I just want to add, uh, he keeps referring to, it was on taken on one day. The report shows-
I think it was three days, right?
It was taken on a three-day period, seventh, fifteenth, fifteenth.
One day with the machine running for twenty, for twenty minutes in my backyard. For only twenty minutes.
The day that it wasn't running, one day, when the machine broke down, the first day we were there, he took ambient noise levels at that day because the machine wasn't running.
I guess the good news is if the fire chief wants it out of there, it's gonna be running against you.
What's that?
I said if the fire chief wants that wood out of there, it's gonna be running against you.
And that was my other question. When it starts running for multiple days and it's obviously a lot louder? I mean, I've got videos of it a lot louder with, "Come on, we do new sound meters or?" I'll call. It doesn't sound like board else are doing it.
What were they grinding? That's the oth- that's the other question. They gotta, they gotta, they gotta do apples for apples.
Big giant stumps and stuff. You can still see, like if you own a recycling building, when you drive out back, you can look at the giant lines of all the stuff the fire department wants cleaned up. I mean, there's huge stuff sticking above. That stuff, I, I got pictures, never saw it going in there. It was all smaller stuff.
So what are these like, are these like stumps with all the dirt still on them and everything and?
Most of the dirt's shaken off at that point. Uh, there are some mud items in the trees that they can't use for the fire or anything like that.
Sure.
Uh, just large pieces of wood, you know, it's a random offense.
Okay.
Uh, and there was a good sample of it when I was there.
But it's all like, it's all, um, there's no, there's no lumber. It's, it's all cut. It's all cut.
Yeah, natural wood.
Actually, I think you can see it right there.
Does the daycare center that's right next door that has kids napping have an issue?
Well, way back when this originally started, the health agent came and said the problem, uh, about letters. He wanted to have like people from the planning board to come up to my backyard and was running to see what the issue is. That never happened. That just disappeared. Uh, then it was told to me that there have been some other remarks made at the daycare, cause he goes there quite frequently as being the daycare and health inspector, has to check on the place, that admits for a very long day when the kids, kids are sleeping and being there on the playground right over there. That just came up in the past board health meeting. Now it occurs that he upset that.
I mean, if you had a letter from them saying that, that would be-
The secretary from West Construction told him that. And they do run it for a long period of time. It makes for a long day.
And that's my point with the D E P. They said any other businesses will bond with the complaint. And they're well over ten decibels at their properties. So that goes against the violation of the D E P. So it should have failed that as a nuisance. That's what I meant. And I just ignored all that that I brought up.
I think that's one of these things that when it's running, is when we need to, like, calm this debate and that's what it is.
This is all the waste wood. All this giant stuff.
That's a lot of stuff.
And that's bigger than eighteen-wheeler. So, this is eighteen-wheeler. So you can't see the pot sticking up here.
Is the recycling site?
Uh, that would be with Newcom and the recycling site would be right there. That's all the waste wood. And I didn't see any of this giant stuff being put in it. The day they did twenty-minute reading.
And have they, I mean, they came out one on the seventeenth of September, right?
And you were, you were talking about one day with other neighbors.
Yeah.
If someone came in my backyard, you see the difference between every other house in the neighborhood. I'm out in like a prominent point, sticking out sixty, seventy feet of oh, one, oh, six. sticking straight out, you know, looking at the machine, I've even taken a sound meter, if you go from my gap yard and go to the front yard, down like forty feet, now you've got the giant hill in my house that's down to the other neighbors, and it drops to twenty decibels.
Yeah.
Are there any, um, state regulations is what defines light industrial, for instance, I know like in the town of Kingston, there's different levels of industrial use, in other words, so this zone can only have up to a ten horsepower motor, and then this zone can only have a twenty horsepower motor, I mean, that machine to me is really stretching it to say light industrial. So the question is, is there something that's more restrictive, because I think more restrictive really holds today, that would, um, that the state has about a light industrial, is that something we could find out?
I can, I did some research on that, I've been not a copy, but, uh, all of the birds and stay at home sort of town, copy.
Yeah, because because our town is very, just a very short, um.
So, that being said, you, you looked at the, the noise pollution area to try to get, you know, and according to Mr. Bell's, uh, report here, whether it's distributed or not, which he certainly has the right to do, he can go to DEP and just give his report and try to get away from that, maybe they'll send some more technical experts out to do a report.
Mm-hmm. Well, for anyone who explained to me that board of health has to request that.
Either the person you talked to.
Yeah. It's, it's all in their outline, plus before a sound meter is ever done, they wanted they would like the town to have already looked at other stuff. Yeah, the source of the nuisance, if the business has necessary licenses, permits, approvals to be operating, informs the local zoning requirements, before usually a when investigating nuisance complaints, municipal officials should determine whether, you know, what I just read, before they do want a sound meters and. Like I said, in his report, down industrial park, it's twenty-three point eight decibels higher than the background noise to all of the businesses. A huge increase, considering each one.
Twenty-three decibels more?
Yep.
So why, it's not supposed to be more than ten?
The DEP is saying, you know, one policy is ten, they're also supposed to look at the complaint and nearby businesses and residences, because businesses have sensitive receptors, you know, that's what they refer to people. So in this case, I'm almost eight, there's questions that they even did it correctly, with the CNA weighted. The, right in the manual for the, uh, sound meter, they're supposed to do a correction when it's less than ten, and they add another decibel, so I'm almost right at the ten, and then you've got twenty-three point eight outside their property.
So that is. And what's not talked about here is you, your property could be very loud, and the next property, because of some trees or some hills or something, could be very quiet. You could be right in the line of fire.
Yeah.
And people don't maybe understand that, you know.
And then also in his report here, when I brought up the reverberation, the low frequency, he says he felt my fence, that's like seismic ground vibrations, that's all we're talking about, I'm like, so like, yeah, there's all sorts of.
He moved ten feet in a residential.
My thing was with the board of health is that, does, you can't determine either way if this is nuisance or not by what's in there.
And and like to, to your point, people don't know, people don't know what the issue is, right? And to your point that you just mentioned, like, people, people aren't aware of of what's happening, I think you, if that, if, if what you're describing is correct, I think that's exactly what the problem is, is that people are not aware, and if, if there was more evidence to make people more aware that there was a problem, I think it would be an easy decision to make, I mean, if you went to the zoning enforcement officer with an abundance of evidence of, of and probably the health agent, because I watched the board of health, it didn't seem like he was, I mean, he went out there for hours and took readings and stuff, he definitely is receptive to the issue. There is a lot more evidence to the contrary, I think that, that we would, I think it would be an easier place for us to be, I don't know.
When the trucks are going down, up and down one oh six, do you hear that?
Yeah, but not like this.
I, I understand that, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, so you hear the truck?
That, that, that's the ambient, so what I'm seeing is even louder than the ambient, the background, with all the other.
At a distance of two thousand feet?
Yeah, and like I said before, when I'm at the Summer Street Soccer Fields and this thing's running, you can hear it a mile and a half away. But it, I wouldn't call it annoying that far away, but you can definitely.
I mean, I live, I live on Summer Street.
Yeah, I know where.
I'm, you know, I it's kind of hard to hear it through, through the power lines.
No, you, you can hear, if it was running, I could point it out to you, you can hear it once you notice it.
You're obviously willing to spearhead something like this, other people may not be willing to get involved, but I bet you they'd be willing to sign a petition. Um, I, I think you know, if you get a bunch of people willing to sign a petition, and I've had, I've had experience with this, okay, um, people are going to listen, okay, so if you can get a lot of people on a petition, and then maybe get them to show up to one of these meetings, if you had twenty-five, thirty, fifty people sitting behind you, it would make a lot of difference. Whichever board you're at. So maybe, you know, something like that.
And I actually just remembered that when the zoning enforcement also wanted me to agree that if I would uh, agreed to be running for multiple days, so they can appease the fire chief and then do the, all the sound, I thought they were going to do sound meter for multiple days when I agreed to that, which didn't happen, it was also mentioned that too, you know, once he grinds that stuff up, we would review the site plan, I didn't know if that was still going to happen.
There is one there.
I mean, it would seem logical that if, if it's the time that they're going to be running this machine on a daily basis, that would be the time to do some inspections on it as far as the sound goes. Uh, I think they were making it, uh, they were running it just to get sound levels in this report. Because he's not, he's not in the business right at the moment of grinding whatever the hell he has down there. Uh, so if, if, if you're looking at something in the next month or two, I don't know what their cycle is, and it's going to be going a full tilt, that would be the time to get a real reading on it.
I guess that was the problem with, uh, the health inspector, they, they couldn't get anyone to operate it when they wanted to.
Well, I think what we were trying to do was respond to your, your request, and you know, they went down and do it, so obviously the the machine was not in full operation at that point, and maybe it's not the cycle that it goes through. But I think in, in Dan's request too, I mean, if there's other people in the industrial park that have the same problem when that is running, like they say, it makes for a long day.
Residents, business owners, everybody, I'd hit up everybody.
I mean, I'm sure the recycling centers should be, should be hearing a, an airfoil.
It's right in their backyard.
It's right in their backyard, I mean, it's got to be tough for them, uh, when this is in operation. It's the same thing for people that are bringing stuff down the recycling center, you know, the first question is what the hell is that noise?
And the other thing I would request, if you do get another test, sound test to be done, is run hardwood. Don't be grinding pine, don't be grinding softwood, be grinding hardwood, hard stones, because I work with tree crews multiple times a month, maybe ten times a month, and when they're grinding oak, chipping oak, that machine's making a lot more noise than when it's chipping pine. So, you know, that, it's got to be a control test, and what they're grinding, it should be worst case scenario.
Well, you know, that, that's, that's good if they have it, but if they don't have that in their yard, and that's what they're, that's what they're, they're chipping.
But, but you always have to assume that there's gonna be oak, there's gonna be maple, there's gonna be ash.
I showed you, like I said, you can still see that, even from the back of recycling, you know, the big mound of all the giant stuff.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, you know, if I was, if I wanted to be quiet, running the machine, I could be quiet, running the machine, if I wanted to make a lot of noise, I could make a lot of noise, okay? So I'm just saying, if you, if you get to the point where you're able to get somebody to have enough of this, I would request that they run worst case scenario materials.
Now, my other question about reviewing site plan, the planning board took a vote, uh, back when we were doing Zoom meetings, that they would know, they didn't want to talk about pledges anymore. How does that stand?
What do you mean?
People bring up these issues and Clint made a big snick about it, so they said we won't talk, we won't bring up the name anymore.
Was it in writing?
They voted, they made a motion to vote it.
No, was the request in writing?
No.
Put it in writing? So that there's a, a a record of the request.
Okay.
Yeah, did, did, how, since these tests, right, which is like September sixteenth, have they run it again, between now and then?
Maybe one day, which, that's what I mean, this whole pattern of this business just kind of doing whatever.
Well, and to be honest, that's the only zoning violation that's.
I heard the fire chief wanted it done ASAP.
Yeah, and I, and I worry a little bit about.
I mean, they've had fires now?
I don't, I don't, I don't think it would be fair to takes, to put, to, to put, you know, someone in their car and say, go as fast as you can in your car so I can see how much you speed. So I, I hesitate a little bit about telling them to just throw everything they have in there, I, I think if there's a zone, it seems, the problem with this is it seems like it's not happening, right, so like if, if they had some sort of heavy industrial use that was happening out there every day, it would be really easy for him to go down there and be like, this is not a light industrial use, shut it down, if you don't shut it down, you're three hundred bucks a day, every, every day. The issue, what it sounds like is there, there hasn't been, there wasn't a zoning issue when they went out there. Uh, and you're frustrated, not because there wasn't a zoning issue when I, when I went, when they went out there, it's that they didn't catch the zoning issue, right?
We, yeah, I believe, I've seen multiple of the meetings and stuff, there, there is a zoning issue, but.
And there might, and there might be, the, and the issue is, we need to have evidence of that actual event occurring, and so it, it sounds like maybe winter is a time that it happens all the time, so.
Yeah, when this first started happening, it was all through the winter.
Yeah.
I started raising questions, went to the planning board, I mean, this is like a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
Uh, got referred to, you know, I got bounced around, referred to the old building inspector, then the police chief, and all around. And then it stopped over the summer, and then it was kind of, I was, I was, you know, got busy, family, forgot about it, didn't operate all summer, and then it came back again in the winter.
And so, and so my, I, I think at this point, since, even since the, the report came out and today, there's only been one time that it's happened, and there's no necessarily a sound study or evidence of that happening, my suggestion would be to, when it starts happening again, if it starts, if it starts, who knows if they won't do it because you're, you're driving crazy, because that could be the case too, but if it does start.
If they don't do it, the fire, like, fire chief was close to like a cease and desist, because all, there was a violation of all the violations.
Yeah, that's, that I don't know, but.
You can speak to that, that's why he had to clean it up and get all that stuff grinded and over there.
Yeah, so, so maybe that's it, so my, my advice is, I don't e- even like we talked about today, I think there's only one violation, there's, there isn't anything to really go on right now, but if it starts happening, I would use that repetitive stuff to go back to the health, the health agent, order the zoning enforcement officer and be like, come down here now, it's happening every day, or it's happened once a week or something like that, so.
Call someone, give us a call, anytime he's running and he's being, uh, agreed by the so-called noise boosters, and we would go down there. We went down there once and they weren't hot. Problem that he has down there is he has no help like everybody else in the following storms we've had, he's out taking trees.
So almost like wait till the winter and see if it starts operating every day again?
That's really what it's coming down to, because like you said earlier.
We can't, we can't tell the guy to stop it, maybe, right now he's probably busy.
Like it'd be like saying, you know.
Well, that's what I originally thought, when I was told the sound studios go operate it multiple days, we do sound study multiple days, put all the biggest, biggest stuff that he has down there.
It'd be, it'd be beneficial to you if he.
And then that never happened, so.
It'd be beneficial to you to go to where Nukem is grinding and take the noise level on that one. I'm sure he has the same tub grinder, you know.
He told me it's the Zaxxine model one.
What's that?
He told me it was the Zaxxine model tub grinder.
I mean.
I believe he grinds at BRS.
And then BRS has got one.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it, it has to be happening for us to be able to do something about it, so when, if it starts happening, I'm, I don't think anybody on the board is, is afraid to you know, say something, I think it's just a matter of if we have to have it happening to do so, you know.
We're trying to help as much as we can, but the health agent myself, though, I think we've been very responsible.
And, and, and I, I think the door isn't closed necessarily, I mean, if something else happens, it sounds like he's willing to go back out there and we're willing to listen to it, but you know, it sounds like right now it's stopped, hopefully.
Hopefully it stays shut.
If not, we meet every month, so. Thanks.
So, so can we request that the you get a verification on the zone?
So, I mean, on the, the.
Whether he's. Whether it's, whether it's a residential section.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it is, it's a weird, it does look like there's a weird line there, so maybe.
And really, if he moves the machine fifty feet, is it going to make any difference?
No, not at all, I know.
You just, that was originally agreed to, this first hour of planning board, he agrees immediately, you need the planning board or something, we'll try to bring it to someone else, then I'll.
Okay.
That one is running consistently.
All right, now it should be ahead. Mm-hmm. Can you come up a little bit? Hello, how are you?
How are you doing?
Thanks for coming.
Anytime.
Can you tell us something about six forty-eight and six eighty-eight Main Street?
Yeah, I can tell you that I, uh, I'm looking into it, I'm still looking into it, uh, trying to gather as much information as I can. As you guys know, this thing's been kicking around for many years, so I'm just trying to get a handle on it. I didn't mention all this secretary last week, but, uh, I don't have a report yet, I'm not ready to really speak on it.
I just want to know what the update is, that's all.
I spoke with town council and because I'm still gathering information, uh, you know, I said it's probably just wise to let it sit till we're ready to make a determination.
Have you gotten out there at all?
Been bad, I mean, I contacted the owner a couple of occasions and then trying to get a hold of him, uh, was not successful to, uh, I can't just go on his property. So.
You would have to get a, some type of court order to move that.
I'd have to get an administrative, uh, warrant. So, uh, he's out of town, so as soon as he gets back into town, I'll try to get a hold of him.
Some of the stuff is just, is, is the use on land, right, I don't think, one of them, right?
Yeah. Well, technically, I guess they both are, because.
Oh, I guess, yeah, right, but one I think is external a little bit more than it is internal, right?
Yeah, there's allegations that there's an apartment, one house.
Yeah, it's one apartment, industrial use?
Excuse me?
One of them is listed as multi-family for ten.
Say that again?
Six eighty-eight is listed as multi-family for ten.
I, I think the issue is they don't have a special permit to do that, right?
Which, which one are we talking about?
I'm not sure.
Six eighty-eight?
I'm assuming it's listed as multi-family, somebody in the town.
Well, six eighty-eight is where all the equipment is.
Six eighty-eight?
Yeah, six eighty-four is the apartment.
There's a lot of places in town with, with, you know, with the power grid. Back in the, in the state, you know, which isn't even anybody's land, it's got tons of apartments, I walk, I walk down there.
No, no, no.
There's so many different places in town, I don't know.
It's, no, you can't, you can't run on a residential zone without a special permit, which I believe they would deny back in, it's nineteen eighty-seven, so actually, unless something else has happened since then, there was already a finding on that in nineteen eighty-seven.
Like, put this, it seems like a ritual kind of, to me.
That's part of my investigation, is I'm, I'm trying to get access to the registry of deeds so I can research what's on the chain of the deed back to when the owner first purchased the property. There's any, any complaints or any. Does any, any complaints or any, uh, findings all should have been recorded at the registry of deeds? And if they weren't recorded at the registry of deeds, he's owned the properties for over thirty-five years. That opens up a lot of can't work.
If there was a finding?
If there was some findings, depending on when they were.
Mm-hmm.
And there is, there is protection under House General Law.
Finding
But to answer your question about a witch hunt, we were all sitting here.
No, no, no.
We were all sitting here. So it's coming from somebody at, at our meeting told us about it.
No, it was just us. And you said, I heard from somebody, and you
No.
This, this, this causes somewhat of another problem, just what Charlie brought up. Because if you don't like my finding,
Well, well, let's wait, let's wait, there's maybe no violation whatsoever.
This isn't appeals board, right? I don't think the appeals board should, uh, initiate
Yep, so I think the reason it got brought up at the, at, um, Dan, you brought it up, I think the reason it got brought up is cause it was mentioned during a different petition.
Mentioned during an open hearing?
Yeah.
I don't know how that, I didn't see that in the meeting, because I looked for it, because I'm like, what, is this kind of
You were sitting right there, and they were talking about right down the street from this.
I've watched the video, but I
Right down the street from this, there's a, there's a property with a bunch of stuff, and I think he, he wanted somebody to go check it out, that's why.
Right, it was brought to this board detention, you were sitting there.
Do you not wanna know what there's a, a business being run against zoning by? Yeah, no, if they're against the, the bylaws, that's kinda what the
That's why we're here, you know, that's, that's what we're here for.
It's not a witch hunt, that's just checking into stuff. That's what we're paying a building inspector to go do. So you want us to just ignore it? What do you want us to do? Not look into it?
No, I definitely
Okay, then let's look into it. What's the witch hunt thing? Cause we're investigating something?
Were you at the
Of somebody you might know? Like, what are we doing here?
Were you at the, were you at the inspection?
There's something shady, let's look into it.
Okay, so at that, we were also told by a resident about the apartments, potential apartments, we don't know, we have to find out. So I don't know, you were there, I don't know why you're asking.
Per- personally, I don't have, I'm not bringing the complaint, I don't
We're asking Hold on a second, the complaint was brought up on an open
Yeah.
On another petition.
It was very clear.
And, so it was brought up, so that's why
We're referring to, we're not complaining.
Was, was the person on record when they made the complaint, or the accusation?
Well, the last two meetings, they were just yelling at each other, so
Do we have their name? Can we use that as an official complaint?
I'm sure it's in the video.
Alana, I'm sure
We, we can request you look into something.
Agreed.
Do you wanna use the, the person's name that, that brought up the complaint?
What I'm trying to say is usually a, a complaint would come in and then we investigate it, right? But now, because
As a board, we, 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 we brought it up to, for you to go
And that's fine, and that's fine. The problem lies in if my determination comes back and you don't like it, what happens? We, we're gonna go to court.
No, no.
Maybe not, you know, that's a good reason why
No, no, I mean, who can you appeal to, is what I'm trying to
Well, we're not, no, 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 I think We're not even at that point.
And Charlie, Charlie's a
Alright, let's not worry about that, let's find out accurate
No, you have to think about
No, because that's gonna change the opinion, just accurately what's going on.
Yeah.
What's happening? What the prior rulings were? Now, let's say six eighty-four is being used as three apartments. I mean, it's been advertised on MLS as apartments, you're a real estate agent, right? Okay? Its zone is the one you own. I looked it up, cause I figured the complaint, they were wrong and they don't understand real estate. So I was looking up to exonerate the people. They come to find out, oh, I'll say crap. They're right, appears to be right. Now, as I understand the rulings, the core rulings, you can't make them change the building, but their use is ours. That's how I understand it. So I take a little bit of offense about witch hunts. You were at both meetings, wait, wait, you were at both meetings where it was told to us. The fellow who told us is sitting right there about the apartment buildings. Do you mind me saying that?
No, I don't.
Not you. Mr. Curtin? Do you mind me? Okay, you were standing there? Um, I think you were there? Somebody else was there at that meeting. So what are we supposed to do? Ignore that? Is it rules for thee? Is it rules for thee but not for me, for some people?
No, definitely not, no.
It would be, it would be biased and hypocritical not to look into these things.
And this is, this is my position, right? I, I don't if, if, if somebody's doing what they're doing over there and it's above board, like, go for it. But I, but for a while now, there are people who wanna make it seem like we're just targeting Gordon Andrews. And we are not. And, and it, it hit a little ho- close to home when you said we were doing a witch hunt, because you know who the owner of the property. And the truth of the matter is, Tina, I don't know, I don't know why you would say that, because we got a reference of something, we never even mentioned who it was, we, we made a reference, like we have always done, to refer anything we get, cause we're not, we're not the zoning enforcement agent, to the person who does that. We were not, and, and to Charlie's point that he made earlier, and I didn't even respond to that, we didn't complain about it, we didn't bring it up. We get told things and we want him to go look into it to make sure that, if, if you know of, Tina, if you know of a bunch of people who are running businesses in the residential zone that they shouldn't be, you should refer that to the building inspector. Cause apparently you do, but I don't, uh, this, I don't wanna be painted like I'm witch hunting someone that
It just seems odd to me that
It's not odd at all, that's what we do.
I agree, anything for Mr. Curtin, I'm just focused on looking at his property, I'm sorry
But why, then why would you say it was a witch hunt?
I'm saying, we're just gonna target one person on Clement Street, cause we can see it. We're not looking at all these other places that have
Let him know, say them.
There's so many other places in town.
Tell them the law.
I would drive around town, because when this happened to the Gibbons, who have their tree service, I just spoke with Laura Jean, and I said, there is this, this house, there's so many houses, um, else, or
Are you sitting in a zoning board meeting, Tina, and are you saying on the public record that there are a bunch of businesses that are operating outside of the zoning in this town, and you haven't referred that as a member of the zoning board to the zoning enforcement?
I don't know if that's
I don't either, but when I do, I let him know, and we discuss it in an open meeting. And that, and it's not a witch hunt, and I'm not, I'm not protecting anybody, like, the, and, and if, and I would, if I knew that I was breaking the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax and they came and told me, I'd try and fix it immediately, cause it's hard to understand. And so part of what he does is do that, but, like, we're pretty sensitive over here, and I don't know and I don't know, becau- mostly because people think we're doing exactly what you just yelled out, like, why, this feels like a witch hunt. Which is asinine. I don't have any allegiances or alliances with anybody. And they come up, I don't read this stuff till I get here, I, everything is on the public record, cause I think that's what's fair. And, and for you to jump out with this feels like a witch hunt, you wouldn't say if it wasn't the person who owned this property.
That's not
Cause you're piped up there, and I, and you didn't say anything the whole time we talked about this the last meeting, I don't remember.
When you voted on, when you voted on sending the letters to the, uh, zoning enforcement officer, why didn't you make us aware of the letter you sent to us afterwards? About procedure? Why did, why didn't you bring an offense?
And you're not saying any of that stuff?
So why is that your takeaway from this? That was your takeaway from, oh, somebody may be operating illegally for thirty-some odd years? And that was your takeaway?
This is how it's supposed to go, cause all of a sudden the paper just came down.
But, but
So I went and looked it up.
Alright, alright. We, hold on a second, hold on a second.
We, one meeting a month over ten years, it's, I'm not an expert by any stretch of the imagination, but
All we're doing is asking the both zoning enforcement officers to do his job.
Honestly, you are open to discuss anything you want, but you haven't. You, you sent an email that kinda made us all a little uncomfortable, you didn't bring any of that stuff up today, and you accused other people of having a witch hunt.
I just think there's a lot of places in town that have commercial vehicles.
And I'm not, and I don't know, I would be surprised if that was the case, cause I'm, I don't know that. And if I did, I would be like, hey, that's weird, and I would ask
I don't know if they're supposed to or not, I don't know if they have a permit, if they don't have a permit. So this particularly, I don't know if he has a permit either. I don't know what the permit is. It's on one oh six. I know that, so I know that a lot more people see that. I don't know if it's an industrial zone there or not, I know that Mr. Curtin is in a different zone. It's right next door, I don't know. So I went online and I tried to figure it out.
That's, that's not easy either, I think.
In addition to that, in addition to that, during Mr. Curtin's hearings, the residents of that neighborhood worried about what? Big trucks, noises, fumes from trucks, no turning radiuses, and I guarantee you, the way that big truck was parked in front of six eighty-eight, did not have a turning radius. If we wanna go the other way, um, what else? I could keep going, I'd be unsightly in this other. Or if I walk by with my dog, I'm gonna get a smell. So fair is fair.
Totally fair.
And all we're doing at this point, all we're doing at this point is asking the zoning enforcement officer to check it out. Hopefully, there's no violations.
I'm not appealing anything, but if you come back and say
But if there is, there is. It's not a witch hunt.
But referring something
The other way around, it's the other way around.
Referring something, it's not.
It would be hypocritical and vile if we didn't do it.
But, so, just, I'm asking, because I don't know, like, since it hadn't been on the agenda beforehand, and I have not heard Mr. Curtin say that it was more than one resident, someone out there. Is this something, when I drive through town, if I see commercial vehicles, do I bring it to your attention and ask the question? Is this supposed to be there?
Mm-hmm.
I'm trying to figure out how
Cause any resident in the town of Halifax can do any day.
I think correct me if I'm wrong. Um, if it's a vacant lot, there's really no limit on the commercial vehicles, the way I understand it. I could be wrong.
A vacant lot?
Yeah, like a vacant lot, but
In residential zone?
Yeah, I don't think there's really
There's no building on it, there's, there's, there should be a primary use to that lot before you start having vehicles there?
Now, if there's, if there's, if there's a home on it, is there a limit to the number of, when does it stop becoming a yard for vehicles? That, and, and, and a material
If they're registered, they're legal to be on that lot.
What about, what about the guy that
If they're registered, they're allowed to be on that lot.
But what if they're storing materials there?
But that, but that, this conversation is exactly why we just referred.
Exactly.
Like, I have no idea.
We have no idea.
Nor, like, I don't have any vested interest in whether or not there's a multifamily there, or if they have a special permit, or whatever. But I, like, I feel as a, as a member of the zoning board of appeals to, to be well-versed in the bylaws and refer that to the zoning enforcement agent who works full-time to look into that stuff, to do that. I don't, I don't, if, if you come back and say that there's, just like, literally just happened, and you come back and say there's nothing going on out there, I, our answer would be, okay, thanks for doing it, and I, and I don't know
I don't wanna overextend and say, okay, there's a place here, there's a place here, there's a place here. I don't know the procedure, how that gets brought to this meeting, how that gets brought to anything. And that's why I sent the email, because I don't know that procedure. I thought it had to be sent off Arlington and put on less cars.
Yeah, any resident in town can just call us, hey, what's up with this?
Nobody, you can come to my office and if somebody has a complaint or, or something that might need to be looked into, they just come to my office.
Okay, so I'm just trying
They put it in writing and give it to me and I'll check it out.
How we're all supposed to do things, because
Well, you're with, to be very honest with you, your witch hunt comment was not about how your responsibilities are being met. It, it was a little bit of a, a shot across the bow. That's, and, and because a lot of people have been doing that a lot, and I don't know if, if you're doing the same thing that they are doing, we're a little sensitive to that.
And I'm sure you're getting the same emails I'm getting.
You're getting emails?
Well, the email that was sent out about me, I'm sure you got that too, right?
So, getting back to my subject.
Yes, so, this, this
I am still gathering information, and hopefully I have something together by, when's your next meeting, in a couple of weeks?
Number thirteen?
Thirteen, in December.
I'll do what I can do, and I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm good footing.
No problem.
And I, I think we just want you to look in to find out what's going on.
That's it, that's the way it's supposed to be.
Correct.
No problem.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very
We know you're
No problem.
Thank you. Asked to do a bunch of uncomfortable things lately, thank you.
Uh, the meeting minutes for October fourth, October fourth, twenty twenty-one?
What's that mean? This thing just turned off. Luckily, it was a very quiet moment. Should I just hit the button? It's our memory fall again. I don't wanna, I mean, there's a record, okay? Okay.
Motion to accept to
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of October fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Uh, favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye, aye, that's us.
Yes. The next meeting for the comprehensive permit? We're gonna do the comprehensive permit next month, or the, that's in January, right?
Yeah, so Yeah, on the seventeen, we're done at?
Seventeen, yep.
Yep, next Wednesday. And then
I'll just be reading a letter and then it's
Yeah. We joined it Zoom?
Yep.
What's that?
Zoom.
Zoom. You have to recuse yourself on that one.
I can do a five-minute meeting on Zoom, that I can do. Okay, I think I can.
And you're here for?
How are you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, I don't know if I've met everyone here, but I run the IT department for the town. And obviously, as we start going digital and Zoom meetings become a thing of now, where everyone wants to participate remotely or viewer remotely, we're trying to get as many boards and committees in a space that is capable of doing it, both technologically and audio and visually. Um, right now, as you can see, the setup we have right now is very makeshift. Downstairs in the Sluckman meeting room, we do have audiovisual equipment set up that they've been using for, you know, several years at this point. Um, it is equipped and it's already set up for Area fifty-eight to adequately record them. And we're currently in the process of setting it up so that we can live stream, do hybrid meetings, whatever the board or committee or commission wishes to use. Um, that's not to say that the hybrid meetings are required. That's completely up to the board, if you guys decide to do a Zoom meeting or a team, you know, we're hopefully moving over to teams, but if you guys decide to do a hybrid meeting, you guys wanna start live streaming them, not necessarily having public comment, if you guys wanna allow the hybrid meeting without public participation, with moderated participation, um, hopefully within the next couple of months, we're gonna be able to start doing that. But I'm trying to get as many boards and committees to meet downstairs in the Sluckman meeting room, so that way, one, it's a general meeting space that everyone knows that's the meeting room, while we can do that work up here, without having to keep on moving stuff around, putting it back, resetting it up. Um, cause the idea is to put the audiovisual equipment in this room for the larger meetings. But it's hard to do that when you have to set it up every night for a new meeting. So, um, I'm coming up here to ask if you guys would be willing to start having your meetings downstairs in the Sluckman meeting room. Um, we've already rearranged the room to accommodate, uh, at least a five-person board, um, and I think we can do it for a six. The idea is that, if you guys are okay with that, I would take all the chairs you guys have in your current meeting room, moving downstairs, and that would be a max of six chairs for the max number of people on a board. Minimum would be three, Board of Sluckman being that, um, board, and Board of Health. Um, and then maybe even moving some tables around, so that way there's some consistency with the, uh, layout. But that's why I'm here to talk to you guys today, and that's that. So far, you guys are the only board or committee that I haven't been able to talk to, so I asked Alana to put me on the agenda so I can talk to you guys about it, and answer any question you guys may have.
What do you think?
Sounds good.
Yeah, it sounds, if everybody else is doing it.
Alright, um, the only questions I guess I would have is, do you guys all right, the only questions, I guess, I would have is, do you guys wanna do hybrid? do you guys wanna do livestreaming, do you guys wanna do full participation hybrid? I mean, how do you guys want to work that? because obviously, if you guys did wanna do hybrid, I can do that, I can make sure it's set up, and I'll be here for most all the meetings moving forward to ensure all that works, but I just need to know ahead of time, so I can make sure everything's set up for you guys, and like I said, it's not one of those, you guys can make a decision to do it for various meetings, you guys can say yep, nope, we're just gonna do a recording, and as simple as that, and then when you guys do decide you guys may have a large crowd you guys can promote that, promote participation for that one-off meeting, and we'll make sure it's set up but like I said, that's completely up to you guys me personally, I do think that it would be beneficial for people to be able to participate remotely especially if it was consistent, I think you'd get more participation that way, but that's up to you guys
what's everybody else doing, or are the other boards?
well, that's a good question it really depends on depends on the projects going on around town, and it really depends on the type of board it is for instance, you have your finance committee, that's usually Zoom primarily, and not even meeting in person but I would imagine that if they were to come back, there would probably be still some type of hybrid setup Board of Sluckman is hybrid completely Board of Health is gonna be progressing into that, I believe, and then I think the planning board is gonna be progressing into the hybrid model probably sooner than the Board of Health, but that's what I can, that's all I can say that, like I said, no decision needs to be made now
yeah
but it gives you guys some food for thought, for at least the next couple of meetings, as you guys start planning for them only thing I need is a heads up, right now, we have a TV set up downstairs, so if you guys did need to present, or look at things that can, we can have that shown up on the screen, we are looking to, the screen that's down there now was actually supposed to be put into the the front lobby downstairs, but because we scheduled the install a little bit later in November we're using it for that purpose, until we get an interactive display in there, so you guys can use it mark it up, and do whatever you guys wanna do on it, but it's there for the time you guys need to presentations, view people, speaking, whatnot and it's also easier for Area fifty-eight to record
we usually don't know until, till we get
yeah, I don't, I don't know if you wanna vote, I don't need one, that's kind of a decision you guys can, if you guys are all mutually agreed on that, that's great I guess, I'm, just, if you can schedule it downstairs next time, I'll make sure I'm here, and make sure everything's set up I also did wanna bring up key fobs I do need the chairperson and the vice chairperson to get a key fob, that will give them twenty-four seven access to town hall if the board wants more people to have access, like a key fob to get in the building just let Arlo know, she can does everyone have one?
yeah
we need one
okay all right, that, that works, I mean, do you wanna just send me her contact information, and I'll get one, and then I'll get in touch with you, and you can schedule a pickup? but other than that, that's all I got
thank you
of course, thank you
living in the twenty-first century
oh, we'll try
yeah, right, I could use some help, that's for sure I need somebody to put in my Ring camera, or something, whatever the heck it is
the bills?
we did the bills
did we approve?
they have to vote on?
they have to vote on, right?
we'll vote on the bills, yeah
I'll make a motion to accept the WB Mason and the two Plumpton Halifax Express bills
second?
all in favor?
aye
aye
other business? we already are joining? motion to adjourn?
second?
aye
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 aye